Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our special meeting, City Council, Thursday, July 10th, 5:00 PM. I will ask the city clerk to do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Echols?
Here.
Councilmember Landrum? We'll give her a minute. Councilmember LaFaye?
Here.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Wixom?
Here.
And let's see. Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Landrum? Are you there?
We do not see Councilmember Landrum online.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, City Attorney Schultz, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Via Zoom, thank you, Rob. These microphones are really loud, AGP. Thank you. Councilmember Landrum and Council, Mayor Protim Edwards have both properly noticed their participation via Zoom in this meeting. This is a special meeting with one item only this evening, and public comment will be on that item only. I know there are several people here to speak this evening. I have two speaker slips to start with, and because this is one item on there, I'm going to call the speaker time to two minutes for all speakers this evening. And the first two speaker slips I have are Jane and Walter Heath. After that, I have no other speaker slips.
I'm Jane. I'm Morro Bay resident and business owner, and I object to the suggestion of the interim city manager. Morro Bay staff has been through a lot. The most important consideration now ought to be how the departure of Yvonne Kimball can be the least disruptive to staff and city business. Staff has been through a major reorganization. Ms. Lueker has not served here for 12 years. Staff has come and gone. There aren't that many here that were there when she was there. And it would take weeks or months for an interim city manager to function meaningfully. You have an alternative. You don't have to hire an interim city manager. Our current staff includes capable, educated, experienced people who have served ably even when Ms. Kimball was not in attendance. They already know the staff and the processes. They can continue the work of the city seamlessly during the search for a permanent replacement, and they can do that without the significant expense contemplated by the contract you're considering tonight. We have salaried exempt city staff who can do the work while you find a new city manager. The money we save can pave a few streets. Do the responsible thing, do not incur the expense. And I'm also concerned about the 960-hour limit that is imposed by virtue of Ms. Lueker being an aperz innuident, because if we were to have a city crisis and limit our city manager to 960 hours between now and January, that could really create a tremendous issue for us. And we don't have to do it, because we have people here who can do the work. Finally, at the end of Ms. Lueker's tenure at Morro Bay City Manager was a very difficult time in our history. It was very divisive, and even now, 12 years later, some of the relationships are not repaired. Bringing her back reopens wounds. Your agenda correspondence makes it clear emotions still run high. I'm going to leave you with a thought attributed to George Santayana. He who is not a student of history is doomed to repeat it.
Good evening, Walter Heath, Morro Bay. The events surrounding the departures of Rob Schultz and Andrea Lueker were troubling and even traumatic. At least one of the emails messages in the agenda from a former city council member described feelings that are associated with trauma. The sudden announcement of the hire of Andrea as interim city manager was accompanied by upwelling of those upsetting feelings. Enough mistakes were made during and following that stressful time to go around, including mine. Mistakes were made, but all the mistakes from the beginning of this matter until now were only mistakes. Our city faces significant challenges, and we must move forward together to prioritize and address these challenges. We are being asked to trust this appointment without the opportunity to ask questions and receive answers. I'm hoping that when the search for a permanent city manager narrows to finalists, interview committees, which include residents, will be formed. Previous mayors have followed this practice, and better hires have, were made as a result. Thank you.
I have one more speaker slip, and then public comments open to everyone else. Jim Gross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. The only thing I would like to point out with respect to the choice that the council is making is that when an individual leaves public service, as she has, and becomes involved, as she has every right to, in various advocacy efforts, and again, she has every right to do that, when she comes back into public service into the same geographic area, there will inevitably be questions as to whether that advocacy might somehow bias her or present even potential conflicts as she comes back into public service. I realize that this is an interim appointment, and I assume the council has considered that issue very carefully. I am just hoping that we can get additional assurances that if, in fact, something comes before this council during that interim period, or before the city, it may not even come before the council per se, that touches upon or has some relationship to the areas in which she advocated, and it could be anything she advocated on. She's obviously been a very effective advocate in a lot of different things, that she be very upfront about that, may not require her to conflict herself out or accuse herself, but at least be very upfront about it and to say, yes, tangentially or directly, I was involved in that issue, and I'm not going to have a problem dealing with it, or perhaps I need to ask the advice of the city attorney. I think it should be very transparent. I was not here when all those other things occurred. I don't want to talk about those other things. I only want to talk about going forward. But I would hope that an increased level of vigilance is present because of the level of advocacy she's had in the community since she was last in public service. Thank you.
Hey, guys. You know, it's interesting. I love it when people bring up things that I can just kind of sort of tail in on. And Andrea is, to me, we have not agreed on everything in the past, as some of you may know. But the one thing that I have found her to be is to be integrous. She is honest, and her communication is straightforward, and I trust her word implicitly. So when you come to the advocacy, you know, as far as, this is an interim, you know, it's only for about four months. And what you want in that position is somebody that really understands the community. And because Andrea has been so active, since she left public service here in Morro Bay and in Port San Luis, she is really familiar with what's going on here. She has her finger on the pulse of the community. She knows many of the issues that we are dealing with. And Morro Bay is, for a tiny town, man, we have a hell of a lot of issues we're dealing with. It is a position, even in an interim position, that is going to need somebody that's decisive, that is knowledgeable, that is intelligent, that has the capacity to understand the issues that are before you. So her advocacy actually is a positive. I am confident, because I know what some of her advocacy has been, that she will be absolutely transparent and straightforward as to whether or not, you know, she should be part of a conversation. And I think, you know, what I really hope for is for this city, because I've been very involved, I have a business here, I had lived here for a long time, is that when it comes right down to, when you guys find that final person, that person that is going to fill that position, that they are somebody as responsible and as capable as Andrea is. I do take incredible issue with the letter that you guys got from Walter. I think it is unfair. I think that it is something that is mean-spirited and is absolutely not something that we want to see in our city government and the kind of input that we want to get on our city council. So...
Man, I think she forgot to start the clock, so I'm gonna try and wrap it up.
And I'm dumb, so, yeah, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got to keep it going.
Good afternoon, Bill Martinie. Yeah, I just also wanted to lend my support for Andrea Lueker. And I know a while back, when you were looking for an interim harbor director, I even approached Andrea, thinking that she would be a good fit after, you know, running the harbor at Port San Luis. And she said, I'm retired and don't need this. So for her to come out of retirement and put on her shoes and volunteer for this, I think is amazing. She can hit the ground running. She's run the city as a city manager. She understands the harbor, the entire workings of the city. And plus, again, she's been in the community for a couple of years. And so I think for an interim, she knows all the moving parts and would be able to step right in and handle the job. So I think it's a good choice. Thank you.
Hi, Pat Mangione, a resident of Morro Bay. I'm concerned about the rehiring of Andrea Lueker, even temporarily. She was a member and supporter of React, which I think could be in conflict with being our city manager. My understanding would be she would be searching for our new city manager, and I don't want her to recommend someone who is against the development of wind energy. And I thank Councilman Edwards for voting with some of the group here that believes that. Thank you.
My name is Carol Swain, and I'm here to urge you to consider as an interim or as a permanent appointment, someone from our staff. We have a very qualified and talented staff of employees here in the city, and it would probably save a bundle of money if one of them could step into the position, at least on the interim, and then, again, as I said before, as a permanent appointee. And we'd probably be able to get some more streets paved and save a lot of money. So I urge you to consider someone from the staff. Thank you.
Good evening, city council, city staff. My name is Jeremiah O'Brien. I'm the vice president of the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization. And I just want you to know, we definitely support Andrea for the interim position. Wish it could be longer, but there's probably no one anywhere in the county more qualified to step into that position. It's an interim position, and I think, as Bill said, she can step into that position running. She's very familiar with the goings-on of the entire city. She worked her way up from lifeguard all the way up to city manager. That's an amazing accomplishment for anybody. And there's nobody better for the job. You picked the right person. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Eight?
Almost.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for being council members. I know you've got a lot of better things to do. I think there's fishing and surfing and maybe a cow to chase. But big responsibility. This is not about whether the qualifications of Andrea is good or bad or history. Like you say, she'll hit the ground running. This complaint is about some ulterior motives for some people who are disenchanted with the things, way things went in the past, and they're looking for future changes, which is appropriate in our system. But I want to say that I support the council, I support the mayor. I know it was not a unanimous decision, so obviously there's some discussion within your, within the council. But this is good. This is the way our democracy works, and I want to thank you so much for taking the heat and doing this. And thank you for the short-term person. I'm sure we'll find a real gem somewhere in the circuit that we can bring aboard and help us get on the next four years. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Linda Donnelly. I'm not even sure why we need to be here tonight, except to counter the hateful rhetoric of an email that was sent out by the head of Morro Bay and Bloom. I got to know Andrea Lueker in the early to mid 1990s, when I was appointed to the Recreation and Parks Commission. Then, years later, as she worked with several councils as our city manager. Those councils worked very hard to come up with solutions for an upgrade to the old sewer plant, to come into compliance, only to have a new council go before the Coastal Commission and ask them to reject all of that work. Talk about hypocrisy from that email. Our citizens are now stuck with paying for the most expensive sewer in the county that didn't have anything to do with Andrea Lueker, since Irons Council fired her without cause. I ask you to vote yes tonight to bring Andrea Lueker back into our city's staff as interim city manager, and be very wary of the groups you hand out dollars to at the time we hand out dollars to those groups coming to our city asking for money. Because if I recall at your last meeting, when you did that, we gave Morro Bay and Bloom $8,000 and barely supported the honor flight. So I ask you to vote yes tonight to bring Andrea onto the staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Paul Donnelly of Morro Bay. I support Andrea. I mean, you can't find anybody better than her. And I'll tell you one thing, she's courageous for taking this one. Brave person, but I mean, you'll not find anybody better to do this job than her. So please, vote her in. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
Mayor, council. Thank you for stepping up and making these hard decisions. We appreciate that. I support Ms. Lueker. I think the staff needs somebody that I don't think we can do without, and I think she's very well qualified. Thank you very much.
Betty Winholz, maybe I'll be the last two cents. I was on the council when Andrea was our city manager, and the emotional response that I remember at the time was how she brought all the staff together as a team, that she really worked to make everybody, one department work with another department, work with the public. It was a bringing together, and she really made community out of the city government. So I think you can look forward to that again.
Anyone else for public comment on this? Come on up, you guys. Get in line.
Oh, get in line, sorry.
I'm going to speak.
Hi, Margaret Carmen, Morro Bay. Ditto everything everybody else said. And some of the people that got up and said this have left, but I'm going to say it anyway. I didn't hear them up here when there was a city council member who worked for an assembly woman who is totally supporting everything they wanted. So they weren't up here talking about that, but they're talking about Andrea right now. So if the state and everybody can say that a city council person can be on the board and be neutral, which she was, then I know that Ms. Lueker can do the same. So please, vote her in.
Anyone else? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, Mayor, there is one raised hand in the queue. That's Judy Lynn. Judy Lynn, you should be able to speak now. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for securing Andrea Lueker as interim city manager. A little bit of power of positivity. Andrea is a wise choice and will provide a smooth transition toward obtaining a permanent manager. I understand why Walter Heath wrote a scathing letter. His pro-economic growth through toxic industry folks are worried that their agenda will not come to fruition. It appears that they have resorted to scare tactics and slander in order to get back in the game. Regarding the wastewater situation, Walter's letter mentions, "We know that Andrea was working toward collaborating with Cayucus, as that was the fiscally responsible path." Walter's group went the other way, ignored residents' wishes, and overbuilt the plant, spending more money than the city had and raising our water rates. The former mayors and council needed an oversized plant to support their population increase, toxic industry and economic growth, and high-density housing. Thankfully, the residents of Morro Bay were able to see the light and elect a new mayor who listens to us. Through the passing of A-24, residents let the powers that be know that they are not in favor of toxic industry as a path to economic growth. We are a small town with immense natural beauty. Andrea will help us maintain that status respectfully. Thank you.
AGP, anyone else?
No, no, Mayor, that is the only raised hand in queue.
All I can say is hallelujah. She's coming out of retirement. Andrea's coming out of retirement, and to do this for the city is wonderful. Let's move forward in a positive way. Forget about all this other stuff, and I think she can step in, and it will be wonderful. Okay? She's more than qualified.
Good evening. My name is Catalina Foster, and there's not many opportunities you get to talk about how great your mom is in a public forum, so here I am. Yeah, you couldn't have picked a better or have the potential to pick a better candidate. My mom is like the most dedicated person to public service. I now work in public service. I have for six years at the regional and now at the state level, so the proof is in the pudding. She's incredible. She's such a catch, and I really encourage you to vote yes.
Anyone else for public comment? Closing public comment on this item. Any comments from...
I just want to share my support for Andrea also. I met Andrea at a city council meeting probably 15 years ago, and what struck me as a dynamic, confident person leading the city council, it just, I still remember the whole episode. While we have great staff here, when we were making this decision, we just felt that we need an interim manager to focus on getting to the permanent city manager. And we do need to move forward, and that should be Andrea's number-one goal. We have a lot of dissension that has happened in the last couple of months, and the past should be thrown away, and we just need to move forward with Andrea.
Thank you. Jeff, any comments on public comment? Trying to just go there before we went to the item.
Okay. Yeah, none on public. Yeah, none on public comment, thank you. But thank you, everyone, for your comments. I appreciate it.
Mayor Protim, any comments to public comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who spoke this evening with regard to Ms. Lueker. You know, history gives us a frame of reference. It gives us context. But I am focusing on this moment right now, and I want everyone to know that. We have one job, one job alone, that this council has to do together and should do together, and that is the hiring of a city manager so that we could move this city forward, and it's important that we stay focused. And I appreciate all the comments tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum, any comments?
Are we commenting on...
Public comment, just to respond to public comment.
Oh, no, I just, as well, appreciate all the comments and all the letters that have been written. Thank you.
I'm going to read a letter that I wrote, because I didn't want to forget anything. And this basically is in response to Mr. Heath's comments and letters and talks of recalling the council and whatnot. And I have a friend of mine who told me to take the high road, and in this situation, it probably calls for that, because it's certainly less traveled. It's unfortunate that there are so many incorrect and unfounded statements that were made in this letter, and I'll try to briefly provide some factual information regarding those comments. It's unfortunate past councils didn't stick with the excellent leadership we had with Ms. Lueker. This will be our fourth interim city manager since she left the city 12 years ago, and I look forward to working with her, as she will be a steady hand with vast knowledge of our city while we move forward in selecting a new city manager. First, I'll address the comment about spiking her pay and benefits. It was actually the opposite. During her tenure, we were in a recession, and we were reducing wages as well as laying off staff. The executive team led by city manager Lueker all took pay cuts. In January of 2012, she received an average $74.69 an hour. Six months later, in June of 2012, she had a reduction and received $73.19. The increase came a year after I left office in January of 2014, under the new council, where she received $75.02 an hour. The only adjustment made to her benefits with the past council that was accused of changing this and spiking her pay was a severance time adjustment to align with the same contract as the city attorney, which has been standard practice in our city. I don't recall any secret meetings. Certainly, it wouldn't have been secret if it was at my restaurant in the middle of town, and it would be a Brown Act violation, so I do take issue with someone accusing me of that that is unfounded. And I'm sure if it, in fact, had happened, somebody would have reported it. Again, it's just not factual. As to the sewer plant, I'll let Ms. Lueker respond if she chooses to in regards to that on her own accord. I was at those Coastal Commission meetings, and unless I missed something, maybe I left the room, I don't recall her even speaking. Ms. Lueker did advocate for the city project. She did so at the direction of the current city council majority, as that was her job. The city had an opportunity to work with its partners from Cayucus to modernize, rebuild, or relocate a new sewer plant. Excuse me, sewer plant. I'm forgetting where we're at. Which item? The price tag was approximately $36 million. Unfortunately, our sewer plant now is at the price of $160 million, and it certainly will impact the cost of living for our residents. I want to thank Ms. Lueker for her willingness to step aside from her community organizations and involvements that she has participated in during the time that she will be serving as our interim city manager. With that, I will turn it over to our city attorney for item 3A, Mr. Schultz.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As mentioned, this agenda item is for the approval of employment agreement between the city of Morro Bay and Andrea Lueker for the position of interim city manager. Ms. Lueker is a retired innuident for Calpers, therefore, there are specific rules that must be followed. Her compensation cannot be less than the minimum nor exceed the maximum monthly base salary paid to other employees performing the same duties and responsibilities. She is also not eligible to receive any other benefits, incentives, compensation, and little benefits, or any other forms of compensation other than her hourly pay rate. Therefore, her salary rate shall be the same as our former city manager. There are a few minor recommendations to be made to her agreement. One is that the effective date shall be July 14th instead of 15th in order to start at the beginning of the time period. On page two of the agreement, at the end of section 1.3, is a paragraph entitled "Property of the City," which section also includes confidential provisions. We recommend that you add at the end of that paragraph, "Employees obligations under section 1.3 shall survive termination of this agreement." In addition, in exhibit A to the agreement, which is the city's manager's duties and responsibilities, on page two, the top bullet point states, "Appointments and remove all department heads and employees of the city." And we want to add to the end of that sentence with council approval. So that sentence would read that one of the duties of the city manager is to appoint and remove all department heads and employees of the city with council approval. And with those changes, staff recommends approval of the agreement.
Anything else, Mr. Schultz?
No, that is it.
Thank you. Questions for City Attorney Schultz, to my right, to my left? Mayor Protim, questions for City Attorney Schultz?
No, I do not have a question for him.
Councilmember Landrum? Questions for City Attorney?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move into comments. Mayor Protim, I'll start with you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Lueker, I can't see you. I see... I see the back of your head, so I apologize. I do want to say that it is very clear that you have people that support you, that feel you're capable and competent and confident and a good communicator. I have seen you at the podium a few times now since I've been in office, and I do believe that you have integrity. I also believe that you are passionate about the things that you value. You've shown that, too. My concern is, is that you have spoken on issues that may come before this council at some point. Maybe not during your interim time, but they still give me pause and concern about the perception, public perception, both in this community and within the region. So I would say, one thing I wanted to talk about is what I feel is a conflict of interest. In particular, you came to the podium on June 6 to speak out with regard to cables being laid on Dog Beach, and you asked this council for two things, one of which was to bring back for discussion this item, and two, to write a letter to Coastal Commission with regard to being in opposition of the laying of cables. And I just want you to know that I understand that that is your First Amendment right to come to the podium and to support and fight for what you believe in. My concern is whether or not that you can display neutrality and unbiased when you are with us as interim city manager. I would not be doing my job if I did not question this. The second thing is the process, and I felt that we did have other options, both internally and externally. And this council chose to go forward with Ms. Luker. And so I do want to say to you, Ms. Luker, that even though I feel differently than the majority of this council, I do, I am hopeful that we will be able to work forward, to do our job, which is to have a seamless transition to support the staff that we have going through this time, and to make sure that we come out the other side, hiring a city manager that we can all be proud of. So I look forward to working very closely with you.
Councilmember Lefay?
I really have no comment but to move forward with Andrea Luker.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, comments?
Yes, I am. I agree with Catalina. I am excited to move forward with Andrea. If it's anything like the experience I've had with Mr. Schultz, I welcome it. It's been such a, it's been such a great thing having him be our interim city attorney. And I am, yeah, I welcome it, and I'm very excited, and I'm appreciative of for Andrea to have changed her life around and stepped down from her board and done all of that. I know she has grandchildren that she, you know, and I know how important that is, and I really am appreciative of her to take this time to do this for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Echols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very important decision. I'll start off just by saying I'm very excited about where we are as a city. We, as many of you know, we just finished with the process of recruiting a city attorney, and I'm very happy and very excited with that process and who we're going to be able to announce to you in a couple of weeks. And I know the community is going to be happy with that as well. And so I'm also very excited and happy that we're making this transition to a new city manager. The city needed new leadership at the top from the staff, and so this city council has been proactive in that regard, and I'm proud of this council for taking the stand and taking the actions to put our city management in a better position. So all that said, when it comes to, well, and I'll say something as well about the city manager vote. I've had some questions to me personally from folks that, folks have asked about, well, it was a split vote. I'll just say this, and we are limited on what we can say about, about letting somebody go that is under our direct control, which is just those two positions, the city manager and the city attorney, because it's a personnel issue. I will, I will say this, it was a matter of timing for me. I, I've already stated that I believe we needed a change at the very top, but it was just a matter of timing. So that's where that, that vote came, that dissenting vote came from on my end. Now, here we are at this moment in the present and looking at hiring a new city manager, and we need either an interim or acting city manager in the meantime. So what we need is somebody that can provide stability. We want the least disruptive avenue moving forward for the city and for our staff, for our department heads. We need somebody that has experience and expertise. We need somebody that knows how to run a municipal government, particularly a coastal municipality. And this individual, as I just described, is someone that needs to be able to serve all the citizens, all the residents of Moro Bay. So honestly, this stuff that's hashed up from 15 years ago? Let's move on. We are in the present. We need to hire someone that is going to serve all residents at the highest level and is going to empower and enable staff at the highest level. That's what I'm looking at. I'm not bringing up political grudges from 15 years ago. I don't have any axe to grind that way, and if you do, for crying out loud, get over it. This is 2025, and we have a city to run, and we have citizens to serve. That's the way I'm looking at it personally. With that said, we looked at all the options. The city council looked at all the options in closed session, and there is a very limited pool, frankly, of folks to choose from for interim city managers. I believe we were extremely fortunate to have someone that knows the city, that knows coastal municipalities, that intimately knows the workings of Moro Bay, and that person's Andrea Luker. And so I'm just pleased as punch to have a person of her caliber to be able to sit in as interim city manager. In addition, that person is going to help us very effectively find the best city manager moving forward as we do move forward. And one last mention about neutrality. We're discussing very high-level positions here, and we have to do this all the time at these positions. And I'll use myself as an example. I'm the CEO of a nonprofit that serves the entire county in the affordable housing space, and I have to be very careful about when I put that hat on or put on my city council hat, because they do overlap to a degree. But because I'm a professional and because I've been in this realm for four decades now, I can do it. And all of us have to do that in these positions. So I have no doubt and no concerns that Ms. Luker will be able to be impartial and be able to be objective in the execution of her duties as city manager. As a matter of fact, because of the experience that she has, she has the ability to discern that way that, that won't get her or the city in any trouble whatsoever. And anyone, frankly, that comes into that position would have potential conflicts. So it's not unique to this individual. Let's just, let's just be straightforward about it. It's just people bringing up old, old grudges is what it is, and I want no part of that. So I, I am just so happy that we have someone of the caliber of Ms. Luker. I wholeheartedly endorse her for our city manager position, and I'm looking forward to moving, or to our interim city manager, and I'm looking forward to moving forward in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, can I also add something?
Yes.
One of the comments was regarding our choosing a new permanent city manager, and I just wanted to let the public know that that is one of, one of two hires that city council has, and that is independent of an interim city manager or really any staff. So I wanted to allay whoever's fears that was, that it wouldn't be a choice made by an interim city manager.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Landrum. I was actually have that on my list of things as that was brought up by a few residents as well as Councilmember Edwards. The HR director is in touch with recruiters already. There will be a community survey put out on the city's website that will allow the community to participate in what, what it is we see for our community in that next city manager. So the participation of the interim is limited, and also the comment about affiliations. And again, I want to thank you, Ms. Luker, for stepping down. And, and yeah, it does raise the question, as Mr. Echols shared, and we've been seated up here with council members who work with our state legislatures and have for three or four years. So the same argument could be made even more strongly, that those votes were influenced by that position. And certainly, the city manager or interim at that doesn't have that power begs the question. Ms. Luker has 27 years of experience with the City of Moro Bay, as was shared earlier, and I think that those are the things that this council found to be beneficial when looking at, as you shared, very limited options. There were only two or three candidates, and everybody has conflicting schedules or other interim positions they're serving if they're at that level of capacity. And, and not to take away, and I want to do a shout-out here right now to thank our staff who is here in the audience, and to thank Mr. Qualick, who was willing to step up. He has probably the, well, does have the largest department in the city, and when there's the conversation that was made by the public as well as in closed session, our concerns were about the challenges with the limited capacity that we have in our staff. We have people out on vacation or sick leave or maternity leave and things like that, and so it leaves those departments stretched. We, we know that always has fire season. The chief's been gone on a call for a week. So it's difficult to ask them to step into a role that could be three, four, five, six months and have that department be challenged. We have a laundry list, we all know, of infrastructure needs and repairs, and I really do appreciate, we all appreciate that Mr. Qualick has done this, and we know that he's always a steady hand, and thank you, Greg, for that. I appreciate it. We all do. And I know those streets will keep getting paved, and I would say just in the fact that this council had the wisdom to look at our legal services and what was going on with our city attorney contracts over the last couple of years, and with this new council, unlike the past council where we weren't able to take that action, we, we changed course. We brought in an interim city attorney that has done nothing but provides stellar legal advice, is moving some things off the books for us that we've been trying to get done, and we've probably saved, I don't know, $300,000, $400,000 in the meantime. It's, you know, not a million-dollar attorney bill like last year. So for those who are concerned about the streets getting paved, I think there's some money there. I thank you for your time, and I will put you on the spot and ask, and feel free to decline if there's anything at all, Ms. Luker, you'd like to say, or if you're good. That's yours. Thank you.
Comments, that's heartwarming. I appreciate that. I am actually looking very much forward to this interim position. I've heard nothing but super-positive comments about the executive team, so I'm excited to work with them. We're going to hit the ground running right off the bat. They'll probably have a few extra meetings with me, but, you know, they'll probably get through that. And I also wanted to say that I'm appreciative of all the council's comments, and I am clearly aware of the perception of conflicts and conflicts in general. And I will, out of everything that I'm going to focus on, obviously, that is going to be something that I'm going to be very aware of, and if I feel like there's a conflict or even there's a perception of a conflict, I will definitely talk to the city council. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Luker. I appreciate that. And Councilmember Lefay, I think you were the one, or maybe it was Councilmember Landrum that recommended we consider Andrea Luker, so would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider Andrea Luker as our interim city manager as of July 14, 2025.
I'll second that.
With the changes made by Rob Schultz, our city manager, our city attorney.
Can I second that?
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Schultz, is there anything we missed on that?
No, you did not.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Echols?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Lefay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
No, but hopeful. Thank you.
Mayor Wickson?
100% yes. Ms. Luker, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. As I said, Mr. Schultz has been a breath of fresh air, and we're very appreciative of his very short time left here, as he's helped us transition, as was shared by Councilmember Echols, to, we've made an offer and been accepted, and we will be announcing our new city attorney. I think that everybody will be very happy. With that, we're adjourned.